Good evening. It is an annual event that this year has become a divisive issue, given the current global climate.
The raising of a flag at Toronto City Hall. Today, a site of protest and an event the mayor decided to take a pass on. CTV's Janice Golding is live tonight with more. Janice.
Hi Nathan. Yes, new controversy today over an annual flag-raising event that's taken place here at City Hall for many years now.
An annual flag-raising event.
What usually is a very festive occasion, this year is clouded by great pain.
Overshadowed by a war overseas.
Israel does not make us proud!
And protests in our own community.
This is an incredible time we're in. Who would believe that in Toronto in this year, we would have such hate and anger in our streets?
For 12 years, the city of Toronto has approved a flag-raising request observing Israel's Independence Day, an event on the city's rooftop garden, which notably this year did not include Mayor Olivia Chow.
The decision is not mine or City Council. City Protocol Office was delegated the power. I think it's a bit divisive because there's a war going on in the Middle East and people are protesting.
Down below in Nathan Phillips Square, protesters, including Jews, say no to genocide, called the rooftop flag-raising a direct provocation.
Shut it down! Shut it down!
Saying many Palestinians view Israel's independence as an Nakba or catastrophe, when about 700,000 Palestinians were expelled or fled in the war surrounding Israel's creation.
I am embarrassed because we should all be... There are so many Palestinians that live amongst us, the entire Arab community that has relatives in... that have lost relatives in Gaza.
For me!
Hours later, at a flag-raising for Israeli Independence Day at Queen's Park, more protesters, although this group greatly outnumbered by Toronto police.
I'm not looking at it. I haven't turned the other way. I don't want to see it.
We just hope that Palestine will be free.
We are standing with you and we will live and we'll fight side by side.
While commemorating the founding of the state of Israel 76 years ago, celebrants outside Ontario's legislative building decried a rise in antisemitism here at home.
It is possible to be pro-Israel and pro-Palestinian at the same time. Our brains haven't shrunk. You know, we are capable of holding two thoughts in our head.
And at both events, expressions of disappointment that the city's mayor did not come out to show support for the beleaguered community.
Well, I think that that sow's division when you won't... when you aren't able to attend a community event during a heritage month to show your support to a community, particularly at a time when anti-Jewish hate is at an all-time high.
If we don't get it, shut it down!
A war in the Middle East sowing discord on the streets of Toronto.
The premier was elsewhere in the province, but in a statement, he said he sent his best wishes to those celebrating today, adding that he prayed for peace in the region. Reporting live, I'm Janice Golding, now back to Nathan.
Thank you, Janice. From roads to transit is no secret, Toronto's infrastructure is in rough shape.
But just how rough is something city councillors are now trying to deal with? CTV's Rahim Ladani is live tonight with more on the situation. Rahim.
Michelle and Nathan, good evening. Think of this latest report that came to City Council like a check engine light on your car. You can likely drive a little bit further, but if you don't address the root cause, it's going to increase the problem and cost you more money. And that is the exact situation that the city is in when it comes to its infrastructure.
The services we have in Toronto, eh, they're not great.
Infrastructure in Toronto is in bad shape. That's according to a new report outlining city assets. From parks to long-term care homes and transit, the city needs to come up with billions of dollars just to maintain the current level of service.
If you talk to other big city mayors from coast to coast to coast, they are all saying the same thing. Our infrastructure is falling apart or they're not keeping up. And as the city grows, we have to maintain what we have.
Not including roads and bridges, across 25 divisions and agencies, Toronto has $73 billion worth of assets. The majority of them are in fair condition. To maintain that over the next 10 years, it will cost $40 billion. However, there's also a funding gap of another $26 billion, which the report says without, the current levels of service of those assets will worsen over the next decade.
I want to say first off, in terms of safety, not to fear that we are operating unsafe infrastructure, never. However, we continue to spend more money than we should.
Asking the provincial and federal governments for more funding is an option, but maybe challenging, considering the city recently received an influx of cash for housing and financial relief by offloading the DVP and Gardiner Expressway.
But it's a drop in the ocean compared to how much the federal and provincial governments have dumped on municipalities over the last couple of decades.
That is why the city's deputy mayor is calling for a new deal.
We know that it is incredibly unfair, unfair that 10 cents of every tax dollar collected in this country goes towards municipalities, but yet they are tasked with maintaining 60% of the infrastructure. We need a new deal for municipalities.
A potential path forward just to keep Toronto running the way it is. The city has already raised the property and land transfer tax, and Mayor Chow says council is now considering other revenue options. Reporting live, I'm Rahim Ladani. Michelle, I'll send it back to you.
Thank you, Rahim. And still to come tonight, part two of our series on Gardiner Gridlock. CTV's Natalie Johnson looks at how three years of expected delays are causing some people to reconsider coming to the core for business.
Well, first, here's a live look outside. Still mainly cloudy. We did have some off and on light drizzle, but no major downpour. It's also warm. Temperatures are where they should be this time of the year, but what about tonight and tomorrow? What can we expect? Jessica Smith is here with a look at the current conditions. Jessica.
It will be humid tonight, Nathan. We're staying above that seasonal mark comfortably so, and this really is going to be the trend over the next five to seven days. We saw some drizzle, but the bulk of the rain that really kind of affected southern Ontario, a stationary front sitting just north of us. So we kind of got the tail end of it this morning. As we wrap up our day, still quite mild right across the board, between about 16 and maybe 22 degrees. And we're dealing with a little bit of a humidex, but not too much around southern Ontario. Through the islands over towards Pearson, we're hovering between 18 and about 20 degrees, but it feels a little bit more like 21 as you make your way through the islands. But overall, it has been a beautiful day, albeit a little bit muggy out there. Coming up, a full look at your long range forecast, including what we can expect into the day tomorrow. The humidex value close to 30, and all you need to know as you wrap up the week. Right now, something's back over to Michelle and Nathan.
Look forward to it. Thank you, Jess. It's a new approach to try and tackle an increasingly common crime. The Ontario government has announced plans to suspend the driver's license of anyone convicted of stealing a car.
But some question whether such a move would be a real deterrent to someone who's already committed an illegal act. CTV's Queens Park Bureau Chief Siobhan Morris has more.
A new threat from the Ontario government to would-be thieves. If you steal a car, you could lose your driver's license.
We need to do whatever we can in our... in our area to deter this.
Trying to prevent the kind of violence we've seen more of the last year.
People being hit over the head with a gun in a parking lot, they're pumping gas, they've got somebody jump into their cab.
Changes being proposed in legislation would mean a 10-year license suspension on a first auto theft conviction, 15 years on strike number two, and a lifetime driving ban on strike number three. The catch is there have to be aggravating factors.
Like violence, use of a weapon, use of force, threat, or pursuit of financial gain.
The former OPP Commissioner applauds Ontario for trying something, but...
I don't see this as a big deterrent for auto theft. They're already committing crimes they can go to jail for, and they're being chased by police and causing fatal accidents.
Sarkaria acknowledges suspensions won't stop car theft, but points out there is more trouble for those who drive when they shouldn't.
Up to $5,000 on the monetary fine, they can face up to six months in prison for not following those rules.
Critics don't see these changes as effective.
Saying you're going to punish the individual who commits the crime more is not actually getting at the root cause of why it's happening.
Asking for consideration of other things.
Technical measures that they should be talking to manufacturers about that would make it harder for the theft to take place in the first place.
Combating the lure of a big payday and the structure of organized crime isn't easy.
Other than, you know, taking away their liberty, I really don't see any way to stop it.
Alongside the Prime Minister today, the premier repeated a push for harsher penalties.
There's many solutions, but one is making sure when we catch these criminals, we throw them behind bars and keep them there.
The government also announced a plan today to suspend the licenses of stunt drivers and street racers for at least a year. A third conviction could mean the driver loses their license for good. Siobhan Morris, CTV News.
Still to come tonight, Toronto's medical officer of health has announced she'll be stepping down. Find out why the doctor who guided the city through a pandemic has decided it's time for a new challenge. So CTV News investigates now. A grieving Toronto woman who sued one of the kingpins of Toronto's tow truck turf wars says she'll push on even though he was recently gunned down.
She says the street justice that may have motivated the murderer doesn't give her the real justice she's looking for. CTV's John Woodward has the story.
Very happy memories.
Memories are what Nadya Simova has of her brother Peter.
He unfortunately died too young.
The 19-year-old had taken a job at a tow yard to make money to go to school as a pilot. He was there for only a few weeks when he was given an illegal gun to guard trucks against the arsons that are common in Toronto's tow truck turf wars. It went off, and in December of 2019, he was dead, leaving his family in agony.
Ever since, my life has been different. I have been different. Part of me was taken away. My brother is... was 11 years younger than me.
Simova, a lawyer, decided to sue the company Paramount Towing and its principal, Alexander Vinogradsky, hoping to question him in court about his role in providing the gun.
The Greater Toronto Area has been the scene of significant violence.
The police were also interested in Vinogradsky, arresting him in a sweep of the industry called Project Platinum. A judge said he was at the top of a scheme to profit from fake insurance claims. Court documents suggest Vinogradsky had a role in ordering a hit on Sohail Rafipour in December 2019, and that other criminal figures believed he was responsible for at least three shootings at rivals. A police raid of a rival tow yard as part of Project Kraken found text messages that led to charges that his rivals conspired to kill him on a trip to Costa Rica. A judge wrote, "The suggested motive is related to protecting interests in the tow truck business and a retaliation for shootings it was believed were connected to Vinogradsky." Vinogradsky dodged that attempt on his life. He was actually cited in Miami at that time, but prosecutors believed he did have a bounty on him with an offered reward of $50,000. The following April, Vinogradsky was shot in the left armpit. He told investigators since December that he was a dead man with money on his head. Years later, that would prove prophetic. On March 28th, the bullets found their target. Police confirmed Vinogradsky was shot dead in a North York Plaza. His death didn't end the tit-for-tat shootings and arsons. They continued over the weekend with three shootings along Markham Road and a pickering tow yard set on fire. Vinogradsky's death means Simova can no longer question him.
I wasn't awfully surprised because when someone takes on a mafia boss role, that's an expected outcome.
She's filing paperwork to continue the lawsuit, waiting for the case file from the Toronto Police Service, and says that the efforts to contain the tow truck violence and rein in the illicit profits clearly haven't gone far enough.
The person who killed him, and this is again only a speculation, probably wants his place in the hierarchy. It's not over.
And his death won't bring her brother back. John Woodward, CTV News.
Two people have been taken to hospital after a crash involving a school bus in Scarborough. The CTV News shopper was over the scene near Kingston Road and Midland. A man was taken to hospital in serious condition while a woman suffered life-threatening injuries. Police say one of the vehicles rolled over and hit a school bus. No kids were on the bus at the time, and the cause of the crash is under investigation.
A cyclist is in hospital after being hit by a vehicle downtown. The collision happened just before 11 this morning at Dundas and McColl. Paramedics say a woman suffered serious injuries. Police say the driver remained on scene. There's no word yet if charges will be laid.
A Japanese company is going to build a plant in Ontario to make a key electric vehicle battery component.
We're just so thrilled that you've chosen Port Colborne. The community's great, talented people here, and you're going to just be so successful.
Separators are essential components of electric vehicles, and this plant will be the first large-scale separator plant in the country, making our EV supply chain even stronger here in Canada.
The $1.6 billion facility in the Niagara region will be part of the supply chain for an EV battery plant Honda's building next to its assembly plant in Alliston. Another company is set to build a cathode active material and precursor processing plant at a location still to be determined.
The Prime Minister is heading south of the border next week. Justin Trudeau has been invited to Philadelphia to speak to one of North America's biggest unions. He will address members of the 2 million-strong Service Employees International Union on Tuesday. It represents workers in multiple service jobs, including healthcare, restaurants, schools, and airports. Trudeau is also expected to meet with U.S. business leaders and promote bilateral trade.
Conservative leader Pierre Poliab was in Vancouver today announcing his party's Safe Hospitals Act.
It will create an aggravating factor for sentencing anyone who brings an illegal and unauthorized weapon into a hospital. Two, it will take away the discretion from the federal health minister under the Control Drugs and Substances Act to decriminalize illicit drugs like fentanyl and meth, crack, and heroin in hospitals.
The Tories would also pass Bill C32. It's a push to update the criminal code to make assaulting a healthcare worker or first responder a more serious offense.
In Alberta, four neighborhoods of Fort McMurray were ordered to evacuate today as a wildfire gets closer to the city.
Wildfire MWF-17 is still out of control, and its last known size was 9,602 hectares, but we know that it has grown since this size estimate was taken. The wildfire grew significantly to the northeast yesterday and continues to grow in that direction today. The wind is pushing it towards the town of Fort McMurray.
Hundreds of residents in the southern end of the city were instructed to leave by 4:00 PM local time. They're being moved to make room for crews to fight the fire, which has moved to within 13 kilometers of Fort McMurray. An emergency evacuation warning remains in place for the rest of the city and surrounding areas. A massive wildfire there in 2016 destroyed 2,400 homes. Crews are also battling wildfires in B.C. and Manitoba.
In the Middle East, Israeli tanks pushed deeper into eastern Rafa today, reaching some residential areas. Medics and residents brought injured people and bodies to a local hospital. More than 1 million people have been sheltering in the southern city after fleeing from other parts of the territory. Israel said today it destroyed militant cells and a launch post from where missiles were being fired.
The U.N.'s International Court of Justice will hold hearings later this week concerning Israel's attacks on Rafa. South Africa will address the court on Thursday after it asked the ICJ last week to order Israel to stop its offensive in the city. It is also requesting unimpeded access to Gaza for U.N. officials, humanitarian organizations, journalists, and investigators. The court's schedule says Israel will present its side of the case on Friday.
Donald Trump's longtime ally and former fixer resumed his testimony in the former president's hush-money criminal trial today.
Michael Cohen said under oath he lied to protect Trump and paid adult star Stormy Daniels to keep quiet about a sexual encounter with his former boss. CTV's Joy Malvin has the details.
Donald Trump's former fixer, Michael Cohen, testified he lied and lied for his former boss to protect him, admitting he took out a personal loan to pay Stormy Daniels to silence her story about a sexual encounter before the 2016 election, testifying it was at Trump's direction. To ensure that the story would not come out would not affect Mr. Trump's chances of becoming President of the United States. Cohen said he lied about monthly invoices he submitted as retainers to hide Trump's reimbursement checks to Cohen to cover up the hush money, recalling a visit to Trump at the White House in 2017. Cohen told the jury Trump asked him if he needed money and to expect a check in the coming days. Prosecutor Susan Hoffinger asked, "Were these invoices for services rendered? Was that truthful?" Cohen replied, "No, ma'am. Each invoice made the same false representation." Cohen turned to the jury and told them how his home and offices were raided by the FBI in April of 2018. They see cell phones, computers, and tax records. Cohen said Trump called him and said, "Don't worry, I'm the President of the United States. There's nothing here. Stay tough. You're going to be okay." It was the last time they spoke, Cohen said. Trump's former fixer served jail time for those payments, lying to Congress and tax fraud, making money off his books and podcasts, and says he regrets what he did for Donald Trump. A number of Trump loyalists showed up in court to say what Trump can't. He's under a gag order not to attack witnesses like Cohen.
This is a man who is clearly on a mission for personal revenge and who is widely known as a witness who has trouble with the truth.
Trump's lawyers went after Cohen in cross-examination, suggesting that Cohen is obsessed with getting back at Trump, that he's motivated by hatred. The defense is trying to discredit Cohen's testimony as just more lies. Joy Malvin, CTV News, Washington.
In the U.K., the King's unveiled his first completed portrait since the coronation. It depicts the monarch in the uniform of the Welsh Guards. The unveiling took place at Buckingham Palace. The king is shown with his hands clasped atop the hilt of his sword and a butterfly above his right shoulder. Artist Jonathan Yeo says, "Much like the butterfly, the portrait has evolved as the subject's role in our public life has transformed." It was commissioned in 2020 to celebrate the then-prince of Wales' 50 years as a member of a grant-giving organization.
Fans and colleagues are mourning the loss of a Canadian literary giant. Alice Munro has died at the age of 92.
The Nobel laureate was one of the world's most esteemed contemporary authors, a master of the short story. CTV's Alison Bamford takes a look at Munro's incredible career.
Alice Munro is being remembered as a literary great, not just in Canada but across the world. A writer who could capture so much feeling and nuance in so few words, and many credit her for pushing the boundaries of a short story.
Somehow, between the lines, between the words, between the characters, that she had this enormous gift to look into the heart of what it is to be a human being.
Munro's stories could compete with the best of the best and brought eyes to an art form often seen as inferior to novels. Despite her storied success, she liked her privacy, often staying out of the media. But when she became the first Canadian author to receive the Nobel Prize in Literature in 2013, she hoped to bring short stories to the spotlight.
I hope it means that the short story is extremely respectable from now on.
Munro grew up in southern Ontario. Her rural connections, often her muse. She attended the University of Western Ontario, where she published her first story and is now honored through the school's Alice Munro Chair in Creativity.
She was such a formal master, so precise in her use of language, at once clear-sighted, but also incredibly empathetic and warm with her characters, that allowed her to speak to so many people around the world.
Munro passed away at her Port Hope, Ontario home Monday evening. She was 92, but with decades of writing under her belt, her words are sure to live on as inspiration for the next generation of literary heroes. Alison Bamford, CTV News, Regina.
Coming up, the financial toll of bumper-to-bumper traffic. In part two of our Gardiner Gridlock series, we look at the impact on GTA businesses and the risk of driving jobs away. Heading into the day tomorrow, we're dealing with another daytime high above seasonal, but we're also looking at a humidex feeling like 27 as we head into the afternoon. So for yourself, for the kiddos heading off to school, extra water probably a good idea. Coming up, I'll have a full look at your long-range forecast as we march in towards the middle and then end of the week. And stay with us, we've got another full night of great shows for you right here on
We told you last night about the extensive impact the latest round of Gardiner repair work is having on drivers who are used to traffic, but now say this is their breaking point.
Businesses too are now struggling with a loss of time and money as they contend with all the congestion.
In the second of our three-part series on Gardiner Gridlock, CTV's Natalie Johnson examines the cost of the commute.
In her job as a rehab therapy assistant, Clea Majoe drives the GTA, visiting clients recovering from severe injuries in their homes. We offer these rehabilitation services at home to kind of like help them adjust to daily life and the functions that most people would normally take for granted. Majoe is used to spending time in the car in the commute between clients, but when major lane restrictions on the Gardiner came into effect a few weeks ago, a 30% cut to capacity between Dufferin and Strawn, her drive time from Mississauga to home-based appointments in downtown Toronto spiked to the point that she's had to cut back on clients.
It has definitely made it challenging to see multiple clients in a day, and I would... I have had to reduce my workload over time as the traffic has worsened.
At the Burlington Anchor Rehabilitation Support Services Office...
[inaudible]
The company says the Gardiner delays have snarled their schedules across the board, putting staff in a position where they have to say no to clients in need because they simply can't get there in a reasonable amount of time.
The way that we navigate the city and outlying regions vastly impacts, you know, how much cost there is to doing business. While we are always trying to cluster or bring together clients so that it's the most efficient possible for our team, sometimes that's not a reality. And when they're... when your basic roadways are, you know, constricted to this degree, there's simply no solution for us to work around that.
The extra time and cost imposed on commuters and GTA businesses becoming apparent just a few weeks into the latest round of Gardiner repairs. A city used to being stuck in traffic overwhelmingly upset by another huge hit to their workday.
The lane closures really crystallized the issue, I think, in the minds of a lot of commuters because what was already, you know, a very long and tiring commute, a stressful commute, became that much longer.
The head of the Toronto Region Board of Trade concerned about the impact of Gardiner Gridlock on bringing business into the core.
Investors look at Toronto and they see all of this congestion and the difficulty of mobility, not just getting people moved around, but getting goods and services moved around. And so they basically take a pass and invest somewhere else.
We're going to be at risk of losing a lot of our jobs internationally.
The head of recruitment firm Haze Canada says as more and more millennials move outside the core and fully remote roles become fewer and far between, talent is turning down jobs that involve sitting in this kind of traffic every day.
I know when I'm driving to work and you get hit with that traffic, it's construction season in Toronto, you start to think, hmm, maybe there is a job that's closer to home. Why do I do this every day? I'd rather be with my kids.
Leading big business to reconsider the city as a place to plant roots.
People are asking themselves is, if I'm going to move my location outside of downtown Toronto, why would I keep it in Ontario? Ontario isn't proving to me the most corporate, tax-friendly location, so Alberta is starting to look very good. Maybe I'll open up in Alberta.
The mayor, though, disagrees that business is going elsewhere.
No, Toronto is growing. There are... businesses are expanding, and we are increasing public transit. We are fixing the infrastructure.
Infrastructure that does need to be fixed, but comes at a cost beyond the capital. An impact on business and the people who depend on the services that have stalled.
I'm working with less clients now, and I've had to make accommodations for some of them.
By my count, there's 1,065 days left of this challenge, and that is a very long time. This is really something that if we don't find a solution for, we are in a position where our clients are really going to deteriorate.
As the costs of congestion takes its toll on Toronto. Natalie Johnson, CTV News.
From traffic to your weather forecast, it is muggy out there. It's humid and not... I mean, looking a little bit hazy behind us, but not too bad at this hour. Nice temperature and no rain right now.
Yeah, that's a good thing. At least it's warm, but you do feel to see a change in the air.
We're getting into that time of year where humidity becomes a factor as we head in towards the middle part of May and tiptoe in towards June and the beginning of the summer season. We're also contending with wildfires through parts of western Canada. There's a little bit... there's a band of wildfire smoke that's kind of impacting southern Ontario, but it's so high up, it's not impacting our air quality by any means, but it just adds that little bit of extra haze to the air with all those particles. But we're looking at a little bit of sunshine making its way back into our forecast midweekend and through the weekend, beautiful. But for now, we're just dealing with some light clouds out there. Weather is brought to you by Train, the most reliable heating and cooling brand. It's hard to stop a train. We've seen a few showers early on and then just the threat of showers as a system has kind of sat stationary just north of us. Right now, we're sitting at 18 here in the city. We've cooled down just a little. 18 through Windsor, 21 through Ottawa, but northern Ontario, they're experiencing a little bit of warmth. They're holding on. Heading into this evening, we're hovering around 14, maybe 13 for the low tonight. We should be at 9, and we're really nowhere near that. And that's the same story right across the board. It is going to be another kind of humid night, and we're holding on above seasonal for the next five to seven days for those evening lows. Into the day tomorrow, we'll be at 23. We should be at 19, but it will feel like 27. So factor that into your plans tomorrow. We are going to feel a little humid out there. Extra water, sunscreen, a really good idea. Everybody really across the board holding on in that kind of low 20-degree range. We've not seen a ton in the way of heavy showers at all with the systems that have been kind of rolling through. It's just that scattered light shower activity and more of a mist, if anything. The chance is going to linger into the evening. We just have the right favorable conditions. We just have the right favorable conditions, but we're not likely to see much in the way of any active weather. Hamilton gets the bulk of it into the early evening, but overnight, just a few light clouds, and then it pushes out. We'll see some sunshine into the start of the day tomorrow, and then we're just watching for just peaks of it here and there. Won't be a brilliantly sunny day, but as we get in towards Thursday, we get a bit of a reprieve. We finally see more consistent sunshine, and then another system set to bring a few light showers before the week is all said and done. But temperature-wise, aside from Friday, and we'll keep an eye on that, we're likely to hit about 18 degrees, we're at or above seasonal over the next kind of five to seven days. The chance of showers is going to linger as we head in towards Friday, but we're looking at more in the way of cloud cover with the chance of a pop-up shower. A little cloudy to kick things off for the Victoria Day-long weekend, but that clears out to the three-year Saturday, Sunday, Monday into the 20s. It stays really beautiful, so we're getting into that time of year where it's feeling more and more like summer. Nathan.
All right. Thank you, Jess. Also tonight, a plea for more organ donors. A Mississauga woman in need of a third kidney transplant is hoping to receive another gift of life. Her incredible journey after the break.
A Mississauga woman is hoping for a third kidney transplant.
But her case is complicated because of certain antibodies. Our health reporter Pauline Chan explains.
Yeah, that.
Sadia Bigg first started having kidney problems at age 14 and eventually had two kidney transplants over the years.
I have been told that my kidneys are shriveled up like raisins.
Now she's hoping for a third transplant, but in the meantime, she has to do dialysis in hospital three times a week for about three hours each time.
After dialysis, you do get exhausted. You do get very hungry.
And not only is the physical challenge difficult, so is the mental and emotional stress.
The thing about kidney failure, you don't know when it's going to happen. It could happen at any age. It can happen to any ethnicity. It's not easy asking for a kidney. It's not like asking for a cup of sugar that you'll easily return, if you remember. Asking for a kidney can be very daunting.
Hey, Sadia, how are you?
I'm good. How are you doing?
Dr. Vincent Key says her case is complicated by her high levels of certain antibodies, which sometimes develop after pregnancy or blood transfusions, but in Sadia's case, developed with her two kidney transplants. And he likens a person's own individual cells and their immune system to passports and customs.
The moment you introduce a cell that carries a different passport or a new marker, your body will attack it, and, and that's what we call rejection.
The chances of finding an organ donor for a patient that's highly sensitized like Sadia become exponentially harder.
I actually had a pretty decent experience with my second transplant, even though I had multiple rejections. My first rejection was six days later after the transplant. I still have hope that I can still live a healthy, active life and be there for my nephews. Have a future where I don't have to be on dialysis.
Sadia's already been waiting nine years for her third kidney and is preparing to turn her basement into a home dialysis center in case the wait continues indefinitely. Pauline Chan, CTV News.
Dr. Eileen Devilla is stepping down as Toronto's Medical Officer of Health. Devilla announced on social media that she handed in her resignation effective December 31st. Devilla has been in the position since 2017, and you'll remember, she led the city's response to the COVID-19 pandemic and has been at the forefront of the city's efforts to address the overdose crisis.
It's been home to a number of iconic games and concerts over the past 25 years.
And now Scotiabank Arena is getting a makeover to help it get ready for the future. CTV's Sean LeThong has this preview.
With a symbolic smash of a sledgehammer, Maple Leaf Sports and Entertainment CEO Keith Pelley says this is a new era for Scotiabank Arena.
And it's about to get so much better.
They're calling it a reimagining of the 25-year-old home of the Leafs and Raptors, the beginning of a renovation that will show big changes in the main-level concourse that is aimed at creating a new experience for fans.
The philosophy is to allow the, the fan to immerse herself or himself in this arena the minute they come in through the, whichever door they come through.
Fans entering the arena will be greeted by large screens, different food options, along with more retail space. MLSC Chair of Venues and Operations Nick Eves says it's designed to be tailored specifically to the event taking place that night.
So it's really beginning that experience for the fan before they get to their seats for whatever event they've come to.
Beyond the concourse, there will also be a new restaurant called The Tunnel Club, located at the event level, but there will be no changes to the main bowl for seating. This renovation is phase two of a three-phase program that costs a total of $350 million. Phase one was completed last offseason, and phase two is expected to be mostly complete by October, when the Leafs and Raptors begin their seasons.
In order to have the project complete by opening day next fall, crews will have to work very quickly, so when the Leafs lost, construction began.
We are going to be working six days a week as a fast-track project to deliver the product.
The current event schedule is not expected to be interrupted while renovations are done.
It will prove to be a little bit challenging this summer for some of the concerts.
Scotiabank Arena is slated to hold over 25 concerts this summer, making the fan experience much different over those months. Phase three is expected to focus on the upper level, but as of right now, there is no timeline. Sean LeThong, CTV News.
Frito-Lay Canada is pulling two popular snacks off shelves, issuing a recall over a possible risk of salmonella contamination. What to look for at home after the break.
As we settle into the middle of May, we are holding on to temperatures at or just above seasonal, but with the unsettled weather this week, we are feeling the heat due to the humidex values. Coming up, I'll have a look ahead at your long weekend and your full seven-day forecast.
This is an incredible time we're in. Who would believe that in Toronto this year, we would have such hate and anger in our streets?
Updating our top stories, a day of division at City Hall. The annual raising of the flag of Israel to mark that country's independence is met with protest.
If you talk to other big city mayors from coast to coast to coast, they are all saying the same thing. Our infrastructure is falling apart or they're not keeping up. And as the city grows, we have to maintain what we have.
The cost of keeping Toronto's infrastructure running is becoming clearer. City Council is met to decide how to deal with a bill that will be in the billions. The mayor is calling for a new deal for cities.
How between the lines, between the words, between the characters, that she had this enormous gift to look into the heart of what it is to be a human being.
And tributes are pouring in for Alice Munro. The Nobel Prize-winning author has died at the age of 92. Born in Ontario, Munro was best known for her short stories. She died Monday evening at her home in Port Hope.
Remember to keep up to date, day and night, through our website, ctvenewstoronto.ca, and by downloading the CTV News app. And if you have a news tip, photos, or video of breaking news, let us know.
It feels like it's 2021 all over again on the meme stock market. Amber Canmore has more from the BNN Bloomberg Newsroom.
The mania over meme stocks stretched into a second day as companies like GameStop and AMC saw their share prices more than double at one point. The frenzy started Monday when the Redditor, who was a driving force behind the craze in 2021, put out a series of cryptic social media posts. That prompted speculation that he sees similar opportunities again, and his fans over at Reddit and other retail investors piled in. While shares in companies like GameStop, AMC, and BlackBerry gave up some of their gains through the day, they still finished higher by double digits. We'll see if the meme stock party extends into Wednesday and beyond. Now let's take a look at the closing market numbers. The Canadian dollar ended the day flat around 73 cents U.S. Oil prices in the U.S. slipped by a dollar per barrel, while in Canada, they edged up by a dollar per barrel. It was a down day on the TSX, shedding about 16 points. That's the latest in business. I'm Amber Canmore in the BNN Bloomberg Newsroom.
The Business Report is brought to you by Canadian Western Bank, the bank built for business. More than 4 million passengers hopped aboard Via Rail trains last year, most of them on the corridor between Quebec City and Windsor. That's up 25% from 2022 levels, but still short of pre-pandemic travel. Via says the higher demand boosted revenues by 29% to $430.7 million.
Frito-Lay Canada is recalling two popular snacks over possible salmonella contamination. Sun Chips Harvest and Munchie's Original Snack Mix are coming off the shelves due to possible contamination in their seasoning. Frito-Lay says a third-party seasoning supplier told them the products were potentially contaminated. The company has not found any salmonella in the seasoning, but is moving forward with this recall out of an abundance of caution.
PWHL Toronto was shut out in Minnesota in game three of the playoffs.
Scoring chances, one just missed the note. There, Budak beats it down. Now a chance, Flaherty, she scores!
Minnesota came out firing last night and scored two goals in the second period. Goaltender Matty Rooney stopped all 18 shots for the 2-0 shutout. Toronto now leads the series two games to one. The team will have another shot at advancing to the final tomorrow night.
The WNBA regular season begins tonight with four games on the schedule. The league is riding high as it enters its 28th season, thanks to excitement surrounding its newest generation of players. The playoffs begin September 22nd. Sources say Toronto is getting a WNBA team in 2026.
Jesse Marsh has been named head coach of Canada's men's national soccer team. The 50-year-old American signed a contract that runs through the 2026 World Cup. Marsh has previously coached in England, Germany, Austria, and in MLS, and played 14 seasons in Major League Soccer. Marsh called taking the Canadian job an "easy decision," citing the quality of the Canadian players.
The pressure is on for 800 swimmers from across the country gathering this week at the Toronto Pan Am Sports Centre.
But only 20 or so athletes will qualify in the trials to join Team Canada in Paris for the Olympic Games this summer. CTV's Beth Macdonnell has the story.
Warming up for one of the most important races of their lives, these swimmers are vying for a spot with Team Canada at the 2024 Paris Olympic Games.
Last year, I hadn't, I hadn't even qualified for Canadian trials, and now I'm in the top 10 tonight, and I'm just, I'm having a blast, and I'm just super grateful for this opportunity.
Backstroke swimmer, 19-year-old Andrew Herman, has been training 20 hours a week for a long time to be here. Growing up in southern California, the son of a Canadian Olympian, he's been gearing up for his chance to race with the best for the past two years at York University and the University of Toronto. In his section, two swimmers will advance.
I was struggling to sleep. I was like so anxious, so excited, so nervous, you know, it's just a whole lot of emotions going into today. But, uh, you know, just get up, come to the pool and get it done, you know?
How'd the morning go for, for your guys?
Morning was great.
Coaches like Darren Ward know what this day is like. The two-time Olympian is now with the Atobico Swim Team, the same team where rising sensation Summer McIntosh used to swim. The 17-year-old has been winning world titles and breaking records and will be watched closely in Paris. At this meet, the Atobico team has 33 athletes competing.
At this point, it's just sort of maybe managing expectations, motivating them, right? Making them feel comfortable in the environment, right? Like, there's no other meet like this. Um, you know, you walk onto the pool deck here and it's, they've, they've never seen anything like this, the pizzazz of the whole meet. And, uh, yeah, it can be a bit overwhelming.
This is the biggest meet I've ever been to, and, uh, you know, it's just, it's just different. It's indoors, it's beautiful facility, you know? I'm proud to be here.
Herman is excited for his races. He says everyone swimming here has a shot at the Olympics. Beth Macdonnell, CTV News.
Just ahead, the massive effort to deliver food to children in need across the country when school programs come to an end, tackling food insecurity during the summer months. Coming up.
Finally tonight, it's a massive effort to ensure thousands of children won't go hungry this summer.
In Mississauga, hundreds gathered today to help pack food kits for kids in need. CTV's John Musselman was there.
This operation is so large, the tables are divided into teams. More than 400 people gathered inside the International Centre on Airport Road today. They were sorting, filling, and packing thousands of food kits that will be delivered to children in need right across the country this summer.
So the packs are for kids who otherwise would struggle having nutritious and healthy meals. We know as food banks that about a third of the people who rely on food banks every day are children, and the need for food banks has never been higher.
Spearsley says thousands of children rely on school food programs, but that's not available in the summer months. Corporate donations provide the food supplies and the helping hands.
Absolutely. This will make a huge difference in the lives of these children who are going to school hungry, and the numbers are jarring, so we just want to be able to do our part.
It's just great to help out folks who are in need, you know? As somebody who's had some tough times growing up, I think it's always great to relate to what you're doing.
I've been at the food bank and watched the packs go out, and you see the smiles on the kids' faces, because it's just something special for them, and you see the shoulders of the parents drop because they don't have to worry so much about where their kids' meals are coming from for the next few days.
Food Banks Canada says it expects to pack 200,000 healthy food packs over the next couple of days. John Musselman, CTV News in Mississauga.
Great story. So how are things looking tonight?
Pretty nice. If you want to get out for a walk, still a little humid, so if you're brave, maybe shorts, whether. I've seen a lot of folks outside in shorts these days, but we're getting into that time of year where we're having the heat and the humidex to contend with, so just be careful being outside when it gets this warm. The good news is, as we settle in towards the evening, we are relatively dry, still a few pop-up showers in towards areas through Brantford, out towards Hamilton, and then areas through Shelbourne, through Barry, Uxbridge, and Peterborough. As we make our way in towards our evening, it is still around that seasonal mark. We're finally at seasonal just now as we head in towards the end of our day. Stepping into the middle of the week, 23 feeling like 27. We're tiptoeing in towards that summer-like weather, and I don't know about you guys, but I am ready.
As am I. Thank you, Jess.
Me, too.
Be sure to join Omar Satchedina tonight at 11 for CTV National News, followed by Zerad Alman with our next local newscast at 11:30.
In the meantime, our coverage continues anytime on CB24 and online at ctvenewstoronto.ca.
For Jessica Smith and all of us at CTV News, thank you for watching and have a good night.